Welcome, everybody. To this virtual meeting of the Denali Borough Assembly, December eighth, twenty twenty-one. We will not have a public hearing tonight because we don't have any ordinances. That brings us to the regular meeting. I would ask Mayor Walker to give us a pledge of allegiance to keep things up.
I'd like it. Second, there. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Walker. And I would ask our first to call the vote.
David Alexander.
President.
Lisa Minor.
Here.
Eileen Holmes.
Here.
Krista Zepon.
President.
Dominic Canelli. Talan Shreev.
Here.
Jeff Stanger.
Here.
Joe Chatfield. Jared Zimmerman.
Here.
There is a quorum.
There are motions to excuse as a member. They have some members who seconded any discussion. Anyone opposed to scusing? None? Call us unanimous. And that'll bring us to.
Sorry.
That'll bring us to comments. If anyone has a public comment they'd like to share tonight, give us a call here at the office. Nine zero seven six eight three one three three two. Or you could email our clerk Amber Renshaw, that's A Renshaw at denaliborough.com. And that will come through to us. And we've been doing a virtual meetings that if you don't have comments in the public comment period and you want to reach out to us, we'll make time to open it up for public comment before an agenda comes up if you have one to talk to a specific topic. So don't hesitate to reach out if you want to communicate with us tonight. Let's see, anyone public comment wise on the call, nobody in our public gallery did receive the communication?
No, I just checked the email and there's, I haven't received anything as of right now.
So I will close the public comment and move on to approving our agenda. You got any call to approve and seconded any discussion or amendments to the agenda? You want to post the approval agenda? None? Call that unanimous. And that'll bring us to the minutes of our November tenth regular meeting.
I'm going to do the last meeting, please.
And we'll note that Mr. Chatfield has joined us here for the meeting. I'll go back. Anyone opposed to approving the minutes as submitted? Might have just asked for that, but hearing none, we'll call that unanimous approval of the minute. That'll bring us to partner reports. And let's see, did you say? With the chamber is here tonight. Did you have a partner report?
I do. Good evening. So on the chamber side, we, we've been catching up on, on some preemptive stuff for next summer. And all reports are that we're right on track to definitely improve on last summer and potentially even be back at twenty nineteen numbers. Staffing continues to be a concern for a lot of businesses. So if you've been on this fence about getting a summer job or making your team get a summer job, go for it. Every little bit will help. And I approached Superintendent Polta last week about a potential partnership with the school district, particularly in regards to internships and job readiness and highlighting within our borough the fact that, you know, the hospitality industry is a career industry. And additionally, that we have the ability to really encourage entrepreneurship within our, our borough and have people be successful at that. And so putting that in the minds of students while they're young, that, you know, you don't have to go to school to find a career and work necessarily for somebody else. You can go to school and, and make a decision to come back to your hometown and start a business that's in need here. And so there's some long-term things to figure out there, of course, and, and planning. But in the short term, I already have arrangements to work with middle school and high school students in Anderson, high school students in Tri Valley, and then are in the process of arranging some of those same things for Cantwell and then the peak programs as well, and looking to potentially expand the internship model that exists for the Denali Borough School District into something that would be more applicable to summer and exposing our local kids to a variety of jobs within the hospitality industry. So working on that, I've been asked to be a panelist for the Export Fairbanks Winter Tourism Expo coming up on a session regarding Denali National Park. And we'll be presenting with someone from Park Service for that, talking about how Denali is open and ready to go despite the road construction work that will be done within the park this summer. And just talking about, you know, how we get that message out to tourists, tourists who will be visiting the area. And so looking forward to that as well. Today and tomorrow are the Alaska State Chamber Fall Forum. So I spent today with executive directors from across the state of Alaska doing some training, which reminded me to put it out here to all of you and anybody listening that we offer free board training for any nonprofit in the Denali Borough. So if you are a nonprofit, you have board members who have never really learned what their job is, how, how they're supposed to do it, what they're responsible for, we're happy to come in and do a session and let them know. Teach them what their responsibilities are, what they're covered for in terms of liability. Matters if you're doing your job or not doing your job. So we're happy to provide that service to any nonprofit who requests it at any time. From the tourism side with discovered Denali, we are pushing forward with our magazine. It has been slow going because, you know, people always want to participate in something that they've seen and they, they know as a established product. It's been a little harder strangely to switch from kind of a trifold brochure to actual magazine publication. So it's been, we've been slower to get people to opt in, participate to that, but we're pushing ahead anyway. It's a minimum goal that we make it a little shorter, add content in as it grows. But at very least, have an online publication that people can refer to that is current. And so still working away on that and hope to go to print within the next few months for that. I have put in for the state of Alaska nonprofit recovery program grants for both the chamber and the visitor center for very specific things, but we're hoping that if that grant comes through, which the decision should be made this month, then that will help get that magazine off the ground and get us to print. We are also full steam ahead on the wayside takeover. We signed a memorandum of agreement with DOT to operate the wayside by the Mi'innan River near the park entrance, as well as the one right by Northern Lights Give Shop on the north side. I'm not sure many people even know that one is there, but we're working on new signage, mainly educational. This is where you can find places to shop, places to eat, places to camp, and then just, you know, interesting information about our area. You know, the, the strange geology of the Mi'innan River and how it flows through a mountain range north and examples of what the area looked like, you know, before tourism and some new things there. So full, full steam ahead on that. And we were pleasantly surprised that's going to cost us less than we initially thought. And so we're hoping to put some of the monies that we had mainly earmarked for that into just kind of a general cleanup of some of that canyon area and, you know, brush cutting. Maybe, I know in other places you've seen like flag light, not flag light, light pole banners, you know, things like that that can just really help give us more of a downtown appeal rather than kind of a hectic piece together, bits and pieces. So not, not anything real visible at the moment, all just behind the scenes work preparing for another season. And happy to take any suggestions or questions regarding any of that.
Thank you for the report and thanks for taking on the work of those waysites. That's kind of a little bit of a no man's land, kind of a black hole and much needed for, for many years. So it's great to hear that that works, be done. Be a nice improvement down there.
All right. Well, have a good meeting and I'll follow along on YouTube.
And we also have Mr. Sidell with Horizon Medical, our health partner here. Thanks for joining us again.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I don't have a whole lot to really update us on. I think the vaccine clinics have been kind of the number one issue that we, you know, we saw last month with our big assisted group from Public Health. We had on the twelfth of November, a large group come through for both flu and COVID vaccines, boosters and pediatric doses, et cetera. And we're continuing that each week with these second doses and, and more. We had a large turnout last week at the, at our, our little annex office in the community center with, I think, twenty, maybe twenty scheduled folks and about thirty-five that had actually had shown up. So we're, we're trying to maybe expand our hours. It seems as though the, the positive response means that we need to be, have more hours. It's been challenging to find the providers to be onsite at these awkward hours when people have a lot of full-time jobs, et cetera. So we're scrambling to do the best that we can. So asking you bear with us and realizing no one's going to be turned away. If they do show up for a vaccine at our scheduled days, we'll, we'll, we'll crank them through, we'll get everyone through who needs to get these things done, as was the case this past week on Monday. So on the next Monday coming up, we'll have something similar and I imagine it'll be equally busy and exciting. But if you do want that, try to, try to sign up now before all the slots are filled. And if you're unable to, maybe talk to our folks directly or even Kerry Keith has been a valuable resource to get some of the kiddos taken care of. And testing has been rolling through. We're seeing less cases on a borough level, although it still continues to be a major challenge throughout the state of Alaska. We are, we are declining. I think at last, last look, we were number twenty-six in the nation for, for capital cases, which is a large improvement from number one in the world. So let's see, we're heading in the right direction. We've not seen any impact from Omicron at this point. I don't expect that we really will. Yeah, it's, it's, it's very likely we will see cases of this before too long. I think it's an inevitability. However, if we're going off of what we're seeing reported with the, the severity of this, of this variant, it seems to be mild. It seems to be highly transmissible, possibly even, even combined with common cold strains, making it very unique. So I think we'll have to kind of wait and see what's going to happen with this thing, although personally I'm not terribly concerned. I certainly don't have any major alarms or red flags raised on my camp, but like always, we, we don't know what to expect. So we'll just kind of brace for the worst and hope for the best. Do you have any questions at all?
Thank you. Thank you for the report and thanks to, to you and your staff for trying to get everybody vaccinated that wants one.
Of course, absolutely. Our pleasure. And thank you all for allowing us the opportunity. All right. Well, I'll be signing off and we'll talk to you guys also. Thank you.
That'll bring us to a finance report and we have the reports from August and September. Move by Mr. Zepon to receive the reports and then seconded. And the discussions of the report, reports. Anything to add, Mayor Walker?
Not on these reports. I would say the, the annual financial report and I'll mention that in my, in my, during my report as that's in progress and that, that will be a lot for review at the next meeting.
One opposed to receiving the finance reports. None? Call that unanimous and go on to the school district report. And once again, we have Superintendent Polta with us. Thanks for doing this.
Well, thank you for having me this evening. For a start off, just wish everybody happy holidays that are coming up and hope everyone also had a happy Thanksgiving last month. Want to offer congratulations and some excitement for our girls volleyball team that went to state tournament. Very excited about that, as well as some of our student musicians that participated in all-state music this month and just really want to commend that hard work and effort from both our student athletes and the student musicians that were able to participate at that state level. Something to note on the school district's smart start in terms of COVID response. At the November board meeting, the board did take a look at the framework and did make a pretty significant revision to operating. We've instituted a test to stay protocol where a student that would be otherwise identified and as a close contact and asked to quarantine at home and therefore missed time of in-person instruction. If there are close contact, test to stay allows the person to stay in school, provided that before school each day or when they arrive at school each day, they take a COVID test. And as long as that test is negative, they remain in school. If that test is positive, just like any other positive case, that they'd be need to return home and begin an isolation period. But with that, it really means that the only people that would be really asked to, to stay home would be people that have tested positive for the coronavirus. Where everybody else could, through the test to stay protocol, remain in school, sitting next to their period. And also say luckily so far, we haven't actually been able to try out the logistics of it because we haven't had any positive cases in the school since then, which is very good on, on a different direction. But we're happy to see that change. The board is also going to take a look at the framework again at the January twentieth meeting. And we set that timing. Again, just kind of gives time for kind of the assurance that the younger students that do want to be fully vaccinated are able to do so. And then also just kind of recognizing that a lot of people travel over the winter break. And we know that's going to be going from an area of dropping transmission like the Denali Borough in the state of Alaska into potentially higher areas of transmission. And so just like last year, when we took some time off and did some distance learning after the break, giving some time to recon, before we reconsider the framework, lets us just see, did anything start to happen based on potential spread that happens due to the travel? That decision and timing was made before Omicron kind of revealed itself to the world. The timing also just lets us continue to see what happens with that variant and see does that research and you know, evidence on the disease expression with Omicron really pan out that it's not more serious, that it might be more contagious, because we are just starting to really get that data and information kind of coming out. And hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll get a lot more clear information on that strain of the virus. Another action at the school board meeting, the school board took a look at the strategic plan that was drafted by the core planning team in October, and they did adopt that plan as presented. And so the mission statement of the district is updated a little bit, improved, and is working together to nurture, empower and inspire today's student to positively shape tomorrow's world. We see that kind of the, that phrasing change at the beginning of working together. And, and really a, a deep discussion of, of one of the things that we wanted to be looking at through this strategic plan are aspects of that broad engagement between school, with community, with parents, in terms of really trying to, to do a better job of creating those connections and supporting our students throughout their entire development. The four strategies that were adopted to help us achieve that mission are, we will use Denali learning to achieve our mission. We will engage our community in order to achieve our mission. We'll engage students with current technology in order to achieve our mission. And we'll provide authentic learning experiences for our students in order to achieve our mission. Now with each of those strategies, our next step of our planning process is to enter into another planning phase where teams will now work under each of those strategies and develop a series of much more specific actions for the district to implement to help us implement that strategy and through that reach our mission. And it's really those action steps that will start to give a lot of detail and specificity to what those strategies mean. So it's kind of like the time where some of the conversations that began in the core planning team are going to continue and develop a lot more through the action teams. So we've done some invitations out to our staff and members of the core planning teams for interest in serving on those action teams. Now continue to reach out to some additional people. So if you are, are interested in serving on one of those, please reach out and let me know. Or if you are sitting there thinking, well, I might not have the time, but I know that a person that would be really good and maybe be a great connection in terms of helping the, the district with really authentic learning experiences for our students. Go ahead and share that name with me too, and I can reach out directly to that person and invite them for that next round of planning process. On some financial updates, the board did adopt a revision to our FY twenty-two, our current year budget. It does show an operational deficit projected at about seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which would end our fiscal year with a little bit over a million dollars in our unrestricted reserves. And that overall deficit for this year, we look and say, that's pretty good, that we don't like operating with the deficit. It's pretty good when we remember that we did reduce the request to the, the borough assembly for the local contribution by about seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Kind of gets us to that point where it's like, if we'd had that, we'd be pretty balanced. We'd have more in that unrestricted reserve, which would really help for FY twenty-three, because we started looking at some more specific numbers for the FY twenty-three budget. And we do see a pretty significant deficit there. The finance committee of the board met on Tuesday and had some conversations. And we do think we can do, recommend to the board a small adjustment in enrollment projections at Tri Valley and project that a hundred and sixty students up from the hundred and fifty of the initial draft work that we did. But that budget leaving others, other structures in place, like leaving our current staffing structures in place based on the original FY twenty-two budget, would actually put us with an operating deficit of a little bit over a million dollars. And if that were to come to pass, that would actually eliminate the unrestricted carryover in its entirety. And so that raises concerns because it's not just the aspects of the size of local contribution. It is something that we've kind of seen that we're getting closer to year by year for the past several years. I've just, our, our operating costs next year are really projected to exceed that revenue. And so the finance committee is starting to look at, okay, what are, what are options that the school district could start to implement so that we can bring those costs into line with the revenue? Because we know that revenue is always going to be driven by that student enrollment. And even if we were to go back to the hundred and seventy-five students at Tri Valley, that figure is still not going to, going to bridge that gap. And we see that gap likely to continue to increase into years beyond FY twenty-three. We'd see that there's still continued pressure from the state of Alaska in terms of, you know, constricted funding for, for school services, kind of with the, the ongoing questions and uncertainty with state finances. We're in, I think, year seven now of flat per student funding from the state for, for schools across the state of Alaska. And that is starting to have impacts across the state. FY twenty-three is also the last year for us and was referred to as a hold harmless provision due to the drop in enrollment that we experienced from the pandemic. Next year, if without that clause, there'd be an additional two hundred thousand dollars less revenue, meaning an increase of the operational deficit for them. So the, the boards or the finance committee tasked the administration with putting together some different drafts for the board to consider and take a look at next week. One thing that they will be talking about is increasing the request to the local borough above what we had initially identified in the two-year plan. And so I'm quite hopeful that the grant application that you'll be considering later this evening, not only is approved, but the application itself is successful, because we definitely know that the, the borough is continuing to experience some financial challenges from the past two summer seasons. And with your forward funding, that continues to impact even if the, the tourist and overnight accommodation numbers return to normal next season. On the facilities note, I do want to just kind of take note and mention that we had some, it's some interesting things happen. I forget if I mentioned at the last meeting, the timing of it, but the water well in Anderson. We had a day, we came in and there was just like strange, like organic material coming out, like looked like roots, like, like kind of fibrous material. And so the, the crews worked on just kind of like flushing the system and investigating it. We kind of slew things together that last month, there was a, you know, kind of small, medium-sized earthquake in the interior, a little bit southeast of Fairbanks. And the timing of things really makes us think that something shook loose down in the well and lodged, and dislodged this material. The crews have done a lot of work. We've ended up pulling the well out or the pump out, taking a look at that. There are some seals that were missing. The seals have been replaced. The, the pump has been reinserted back into the, the well itself. It's functioning. We're still getting every once in a while, a little bit of debris coming out of it. And we still have an issue that we did some work on, that there's air leaking into the system. And it's, it's operational, but it will need some further repairs. And we do think we brought it to a point that is safely and reliably going to last until springtime. It'll be a lot easier and a lot more comfortable, a lot safer to do those repairs. We are still also waiting on confirmation from water tests to just assure the water quality. And until then, we're providing bottled water for everybody in that school, just to make sure, because we haven't been able to, to confirm that we're without contamination. Hopefully within a week or two, we'll get those tests back. Another thing I just want to mention, we could have put it up in the appreciations. It just kind of connects to the donations you solarized Denali. And we also had just a community member make an anonymous donation to the school district for two thousand five hundred dollars to help support that project. And just really appreciate that. And it allows us to again, expand the, the number of panels for that project, which is going to have that long-term cost reduction to the district now and into the future. And with that, I didn't entertain any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Polta, for your, for your report. Hope you enjoy a good holiday break coming up here.
Thank you. And I'll watch the rest of your meeting on YouTube.
That'll bring us to Mayor's report. Mayor Walker.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. And I hope everybody had a, had a enjoyable Thanksgiving. Thank you. Thanks for, for a lot of things, but after the long office staff meeting today, I definitely give thanks to tremendous staff we have here at Borough, where I couldn't have for better to work with. And I want to wish everybody happy holidays upcoming. And yeah, congratulations to those Tri Valley girls volleyball team and Coach Minor for both making it to state and also really representing Tri Valley School so well there at, at the state. And Coach Miner for both making it to state and also really representing Tri Valley School so well there at at the state. Really enjoyed following along, although couldn't be there in person, although we were following on that. On that streaming service and rooting them on. That's really great. So I'm. Moving into the written report, I do apologize to the assembly that came into your packet a little late. It came in today into your packet and it's on the onboard. Packet and for the public, it goes onto our website after this meeting. But it does start off with that Cantwell to Healy Parks Highway how or planning an environmental study. That study which started back in twenty twenty is an important phase right now. With the final, the third and final public open house soliciting comments, listening input. In progress right now and everybody in the borough received a big flyer in your your mailbox and. I encourage folks to to check it over and and consider comments and look at the different projects in there. It does identify needs and opportunities along this corridor, proposes solutions and prioritizes those projects. The current draft proposes twenty nine different solutions totaling over four hundred million dollars in projects. The Denali Borough has participated throughout the study. It's conducted by DOT in partnership with Federal Highways and the National Park Service. And we participate as a member of the Project Advisory Committee, which includes a really good wide range of regional stakeholders. It's been a good process. I do encourage folks to visit that open house. I. The website on the written report, but you can go to the DOT site and just type in Cantwell to Healy Talon. It'll it'll take you to that open house and they've got this interactive map. It's very cool. I spent a fair amount of time on it looking in detail at every. All twenty nine of these projects listed, right? And you know, the interactive map really makes it makes it easy. And it shows you those project details. And I did make some comments. And. And it's just really exciting that this. Particularly exciting to be conducting this type of planning and environmental groundwork for solutions. Addressing big issues like the at great railroad crossing canyon and traffic issues and parking issues in the canyon. Traffic safety and pedestrian connectivity within our communities between our walls. Among other solutions at a time. When infrastructure funding will be coming available now. Not guaranteeing all four hundred million dollars in projects are going to be funded. But there's there's going to be, it's a it's a really ripe opportunity time. And and we're going to have these projects keyed up, which I'm pretty excited about. Next, we'll move into the Alaska Municipally Annual Local Government Conference was held this past. November fifteenth to the seventeenth. It's the seventy first annual. Local Government Conference. Treasurer Connie McMaster and I were able to attend in person while other staff members participated virtually. To the relevant sections of the conference and AML really did work hard to model how to put on a large scale conference safely in the time of COVID. A lot of other organizations canceled their big fall conferences and conventions. And we went forward with it with a number of mitigations in place. And we did have a good turnout. There were over three hundred, nearly four hundred people. And it went well. It went well safely. So we're proud of that. At the annual meeting, Alaska municipalities, well, we voted upon our policy and position statements. For the year, our resolutions. At this conference, we hosted a gubernatorial debate. We heard from Senator Murkowski regarding the signed infrastructure bill. Together, we we networked towards, we shared challenges and successes regarding COVID response. And and they have conducted a variety of informative sessions on municipal topics. And over the course of the week, I did participate in a couple of different additional meetings. Sir, on the Board of Directors of both AML and Board of Trustees of the AML GIA that. Insurance Association, it held a board meeting as well. And after AML was the Conference of Mayors, Alaska Conference of Mayors. And we had some really good sessions. We shared our communities' infrastructure needs, discussed potential avenues forward. And we had a really good session with Dr. Anne Zink, our Alaska's Chief Medical Officer and the Director of Public Health, Heidi Hedberg. They shared, you know, current status updates, but also upcoming changes to COVID testing and reporting. That we want to share with folks, let them know it's coming. They're moving away from ECR testing. That's kind of been in progress, but it's going to happen more in January where. You know, the lab, the the state virology lab will be doing PCRs just for repressed from the hospitals and from from providers, but not. Routine testing. That'll all be antigen testing and and that has, it's going to be much more widely available. Home tests, right? And. That's where it's all going. And it'll change reporting as well. Because all that data won't be collected by the state. People will be doing their own testing. I did my own test at home yesterday. Didn't report it to the state, so the state's positivity rate. Which is a key data point that we've been using all along will be off. Because I did a test. It was negative, but it won't show up on any kind of reporting. So. So the reporting's going to change, basically. And it's all it's all coming up. And at the same time, you know, I think it's a positive step that we are. That we have so many different. You know, both vaccinations and therapeutics and and that our Chief Medical Officer and Director of Public Health. You know, recommending these steps forward. So. That's coming up. I wanted to update you on that NTIA, that National Telecommunications and Infrastructure Administration grant that the. That the Borough filed in partnership with MTA, that the Assembly approved that application at the last meeting. We did hope to hear back. Whether whether it was funded, you know, that 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 date has come and gone, but NTIA. Said we had so many applications for so much money. They only had, well, only, they had two, two hundred and eighty eight million dollars available. But they received two hundred and forty applications for over two point seven billion dollars. So they need more time to review them all. And to thoroughly vet all the applications, they even allow some of those applicants to, you know. To make some corrections along the way. And so we're not likely to hear back on that broadband. Grant, that big grant for about eight billion dollars until mid-January. I want to let you know about Missile Defense Agency hosting the initial fielding ceremony for the Long Range Discrimination Radar Clear Space Force Station. That was Monday, this past Monday. And boy, it was quite an event. They did a tremendous job. Congratulate everybody involved with it. Including Assembly Member Stenger. It was a an excellent ceremony and along, I attended along with Anderson Mayor Thompson. And Anana Mayor Burrhagen and Fairbanks North Star Borough Mayor Ward. It was hosted by the Director, the Director of the Missile Defense Agency Vice Admiral Hill. And the new system, which I had had a chance to tour previously, but it's amazing. It still has a lot of testing and refinement ahead. But the the MDA, the Missile Defense Agency is very pleased. It's it's their infrastructure of hell, held there on clear and clear will be operating yet. But, you know, so pleased to have such a large, complex and important project turn the corner from construction to operation. It is amazingly complex project and they could pull it off through COVID level of engineering in our agency work, sheer physical work. You know, the largest concrete pour in Alaska's history. Prior to construct the most advanced radar system in the world. It's truly remarkable. We were the celebration. That's what happened on Monday. It is the most advanced radar system in the world here in the. So congratulations to all involved and still there's a lot of work ahead. And moving on to ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. Variety of grants available through that act and many of them through the United States Economic Development Administration, EDA. The Borough is, I want to let you know that the Borough is working with partners including Kinnock Peninsula, Economic Development District and Alaska Trails. And developing a grant application under the EDA's Travel Tourism and Outdoor Recreation Program. Acronym is the T-Tour. And there's an EDA as well, and that's Economic Adjustment Assistance. Those grant opportunities are specifically earmarked toward coal communities. The Borough is considering potential projects for an application there. And there, the the focus of the project. Needs to encourage private investment, job creation. So wanted to kind of let you know that upcoming at the January meeting, we expect. To have resolutions to support to the Assembly for those applications. For these grant opportunities. And also, it's really a time to be, as we're talking about considering our infrastructure needs. And the infrastructure bill, Senator Murkowski, our office, we're so integral in putting together. They want to hear from us in terms of our infrastructure needs and and requests. And so we're going to be getting that to you as well in the not too at the January meeting. So expect those coming your way soon and. And I did mention the financials. You you received, you know, the past month's financial reports. But the big report is the annual financial report for the year end, June thirtieth. And then of course auditing those statements. And that's all in progress right now. You have a communication in your in your packet regarding that audit. But I wanted to let you know that, you know, it's in progress. I've had a chance to review a draft. It will be issued by December thirty first. My statute and obviously a little foreshadowing that there's some good in there and there's some challenge. As a chance to get it pretty carefully and also do some projections. It's not finalized yet, but it's getting there and. And. There'll be some work ahead as we've had challenges to talk about, you know, big losses. Under our resolutions. So so that's what I've got for you and.
Mayor Walker. Bring us to Assembly Comments. Start with Mr. Alexander.
Want to wish everybody a happy holidays and a shout out to our neighbors, which in this cold temperatures came through for me, especially Paul Christensen. Thumbs up to him. But have a good holiday.
Did Miner?
I'll just say thanks for the reports. Vanessa, I'm really excited about the internship possibilities for the kids at the school. I think that's an awesome opportunity for them to tap into the. Business entrepreneurship, you know, possibilities that they have here. Also, the girls, yes, the volleyball team did take third. That was awesome. But also really awesome is that they got the highest GPA of all the volleyball teams in two A. So I'm really proud of the girls. They really do stay on top. They're school. They're, I'm really super proud of them. And. Yeah, thank you to the staff and all that they do and for getting us the reports. And yeah, that's it.
I just want to say hi everyone and thanks for the staff. And I really don't have any comments this time.
Yeah, we've got one comment I'm going to say here. And that's just a reminder for folks have the ability to. Keep their applications in for the Denali Borough slash Lions Club. COVID affected financial relief program deadline is the fifteenth, so that's Monday coming up. And so we're hoping to have those checked out in the mail shortly thereafter so that they can be in the box. So if you know anybody who's come down with COVID and reports a lot here and that's the team that we're at now. But I know that the application is available online. If they need access to a printer or. Copy, I know some people have come here to the Borough Office. The library also has availability for that as well. And I just wanted to make note that part of the reason why we don't have any questions after these reports, because they're so darn good. So I appreciate that. Have a good weekend. We'll get them beforehand. Listen to the audio. So always appreciated to have all the information given.
Or have any comments right now? Mr. Stenger?
Yeah, I'd reiterate that. Excellent reports by, as always, by Mayor Walker and Mr. Polta. I think we got the right people in this in in those jobs right now, doing a great job. Also wanted to thank Seamus with the Sedol Clinic. And kudos to Vanessa. I was really really impressed with her briefing and I think I hope we can support. Her needs on the improvements as much as possible. I feel her work is necessary and directly linked to our financial recovery and growth. I think that's really important. We do whatever we can to help them out. That's it. Thanks.
Bring us to Communication and Appearance Requests.
Ms. Holmes.
Oh, Ms. Holmes, I'm sorry. If you mean to speak, Ms. Holmes.
Yeah, thank you. All I wanted to say was a big thank you and a congratulations to Jared Zimmerman, Krista Zimmerman. Hell, wait a minute. Krista's a poehm. Sorry about that. I didn't mean to put you through that. And also to David Alexander on the elections. Thank you so much for putting yourself out there.
And with that, we'll move on to Communications and Appearance Requests. And we have a letter from our our auditor. Describing the the planning and timeline for this year's. Just read that in the in the packet. We have no draft ordinances tonight and no pending orders tonight. Do have a resolution. That is Resolution twenty one seventeen, our application for ARPA Local Government Lost Revenue Relief Program. And we had a special meeting planned for last week and extended the deadline, so we put it on the regular agenda for for tonight. So. Mayor Walker, you prepared the application?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. So I'd start by. Don't go ahead, right?
Yeah, we'll get a motion to.
Yeah, I would like to.
Moved by Ms. Oppone to approve Resilience twenty one seventeen. Now, Mayor Walker.
Thank you. We are really appreciative that the state legislature saw fit to commit fifty million dollars of the state's. Well, five hundred and fifty million this year, five hundred and fifty million next year. The state gets one point one billion in ARPA funds. And of that five hundred and fifty million this year, the legislature. Committed fifty million to this program. LGLRRP or. The Local Government Lost Revenue Relief Program. To to help offset the significant revenue losses. In our municipalities. And of course, we've been a poster child all along in terms of lost revenue and. And while we don't know the exact formula that the CRA, that's the vision of community. And Regional Affairs is going to use to allocate those fifty million in amongst the the many different applications they're going to receive. I do hope that they consider relief received. I do hope that they consider relief received, or if we did receive, receives and believe that that steep loss is, and I communicated that to them. But yeah, we have this, this, we've already applied, right? We submitted this application that you have in front of you. This is the resolution from the, the Assembly confirming that yes, indeed, we lost revenue, this, this level of revenue. And you have the supporting documentation here. The relevant number, the most relevant number, is on the back page. And this is the calculation tool used by the state. And it is for the calendar year, not, not a fiscal year, right? We operate in fiscal years, but this is the calendar year 2020. And yeah, you see four, over $4 million, nearly $4.1 million loss revenue, which is what you see on the application. And, and that percentage of lost revenue, a lot of communities I spoke to down at AML, some of them are right at 10% of loss. Some of them, the, the calculation, even though they were sure they lost more, the calculation just didn't work out for them, and they came in under 10%. And some came in just over 10, at 12%. For 10% was the requirement to be able to apply to this program. You need to lose 10% of revenue. And yeah, our number there, 68%. So, so we are hopeful that a majority of that $4 million loss can be offset through, through this program. See how it, the actual allocation comes out with the various different other applications.
I'm curious to know where we better rank the state. I'm suspecting we're like number one or two. How do we place a, a category?
Yeah, all the coastal communities that received cruise ships were heavily impacted, lost sales tax revenue. Many of those communities also, you know, have other taxes which help even that, that was ups and that, that, that big down. Really, we've been, the poster children of this, of the revenue loss have been the Denali Borough and Skagway, Skagway Borough. They also lost in this, this scale of percentage of revenue. They also received a lot more relief when, when specific ARPA relief came. There was specific relief for harbors, the ports, that saw revenue losses. And those coastal communities received a fair amount of relief through that ARPA program here in the interior. Strictly based, our relief, as you know, was strictly based on population, not the economic impact. And that was my big problem that I articulated, as it was going through to the ARPA bill, really, was that the relief had no correlation to the economic damage. So I do appreciate the legislature stepping up to, to stand up this program. I do hope that they consider, you know, the full scale of not only the loss, but also the relevance received. Because we got $200,000 relief.
Another related question. Are they going to be thinking consideration, our location, the road system, and how, how the emergency services that have provided through the Borough Grants to our fire and deaths, impact the safety and welfare of everyone in the state that is part of that one? Is critical infrastructure, like, for, for, for safety.
No question. Good point. As you see by the application, they purposely stood up a very simple, very simple program. The one-page application. And, you know, they, they did not tell me, and I asked exactly what their allocation formula is, but I really doubt strongly that whatever Sheffield did, it takes that level of consideration.
Right. Pretty simple and straightforward, yeah.
That's, that's how they spend. But I'd like to also consider what you're seeing in ARPA. Because a lot of other communities.
I'm just not used to seeing so little on an application.
Yeah.
So, so I'm wondering, just scratching my head, saying, what, what more is there here? Are they looking at any other criteria? Never really thought something this small, straightforward.
And I, and I believe they wanted to keep it simple, you know, for the administration of the municipalities to be able to, you know, to work through this grant program. We, we found it pretty straightforward, although there were a number of calculations to see, to do, to arrive at your number. And, and the one other thing they asked was that, yeah, the local governing body, Assembly, Borough, Council, City, approved the resolution. And they provided a template for that. That's what you have for it. Do you know what the timeline is for processing the applications and dispersal? Dispersal? The resolution extension went to the end of this month. So they'll be processing them after that. With such a simple program, I do expect that, that it should be a pretty quick turn. And it very may well be prorated number. For example, if they receive 75 million in requests and they seek, and they could, could, their allocation formula may be to simply prorate it all to come to the 50, so we'll see. Any other discussion on the resolution? Not ask for a roll call vote or approval?
Eileen Holmes?
Yes.
Lisa Minor?
Yes.
Talon Street?
Yes.
Joe Chatfield?
Yes.
Jeff Stanger?
Yes.
David Alexander?
Yes.
Krista's a poem?
Yes.
Jared Zimmerman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Resolution is approved. We have one item and other business, which is the marijuana license renewal for the Denali Cannabis Catch.
I'd like to make motion, non protest for marijuana license renewal, one one.
Moved by Ms. Holmes to not protest and then seconded it. Any discussion on the motion? Anyone opposed to not protesting? You're normal, Collette Vanivas? Please just public comment. Haven't had anyone join us in the gallery? Everybody chime in online?
Yes. Nope.
Back to Assembly Comments, and we'll go back to Ms. Holmes.
I just wanted to thank everybody for a nice meeting tonight, and we will see you next month.
Stinger?
Uh, yeah, good meeting. And I said a lot at the initial, but to Mayor Walker, just keep fighting on this, getting these funds. I know you're trying, and keep pressure up.
I'd wish everybody a happy holidays.
Um, yeah, I just want to thank you, the staff, and our colleagues at the Chamber, at the school, school district, et cetera. Seems crazy that 2021 is already kind of to an end. Consider 2019 a black week in my mind still. What you guys do as far as serving a community, it is, it is, it's great. And so, you know, pat yourself on the back a little bit if you go through the holidays, and squeeze your loved ones a little extra time, and definitely don't take those moments for granted. Again, the Lions Club deadline for COVID relief is Monday. So if you know anybody with any point during this period that has contracted COVID-19, that could need a little extra help, go on in, request us, tell them to apply, if they need help with COVID relief or somebody on the Borough where we'll get them sorted out. Yeah, and then as far as our revenue, it's nice to hear that we're kind of expecting to turn up going into this next evening. But like, like the mayor mentioned, we have a lot of work to do to get through the next eight seasons. So keep that in mind, and keep your head on, because we're going to need all the help we can get. And if not stay warm, and if you are traveling, be so safe.
Well, just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, happy year and happy holidays. And thanks to the staff. And, and it wasn't for them, we really wouldn't be able to keep things going, especially in the last few years. And I think that's all I have.
I'll just say thanks again, everybody, and have happy holidays, and I'll see y'all next year.
Mr. Tree?
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for coming in for the reports that we have. The message of yours is really good. I like to hear more about entrepreneurship, need any help with that, just letting me know. And just being able to get the kids back here and stuff like that. Doing, creating the jobs. And to hear about all the programs that are coming out with the infrastructure bill and everything else that's going on. Really good to see that our infrastructure is going to be being built. Also, we have, thank the staff for all the work putting in for these grants, and we can start really getting better transportation. And get a better destination for everybody to come and see what we have to offer. Happy holidays. And December 16th is coming up. Neighbor, neighbor, come join us, put some boxes together and help deliver.
And Mr. Alexander?
I want to reiterate, good job to the mayor and the staff, and we really appreciate all the work that he's been putting in on all this. And everybody have a good holiday.
Down in place in the next meeting, will be Wednesday, January 12th. Right here and over the internet. Remote meeting here?
Do your.
Second, second. opposed? All right. Have a good evening, everyone. See you in January.
See you next year.
Happy holidays.